So, most of these projects were, they were not just thrown in here as wants, but that we really looked at what the need was and how it would serve the population and even the visitors that come to Punta Gorda. So, I felt like the group was a very functional group and considered everything that was brought, but this definitely, we had consensus that these were the recommendations. Yes?
I want to congratulate the group. I think that, again, looking at the mass of projects that have been proposed at over, what, 18 million, not even more than 18 million, because a lot of them were to be determined in terms of costs, that you did an excellent job in terms of weeding those down. And I want to thank all of those individuals who did participate in the, on the steering committee.
Thank you.
I'm okay with the list.
Yeah, I think that it was, our goal was to make this as open as possible and to invite the community to participate in this, so that it was not a council-driven, but a community-driven process. And it really feels like that's what was done. And I have great respect for the work that was done by our community in coming forward with this. It shows that there was a lot of thought behind this.
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't, was our council members present at these meetings when they were going on?
I went to one.
I went to one. That's the last one.
Unfortunately, well, okay, I was attending the county focus group meetings while these meetings were going on, so I didn't have a chance to attend and get involved in some of the detail. The 5/13 date that you mentioned from the county, Howard, is that when they have to identify all of the projects that the county intends to put on the, on the list?
That's when they plan to. Yeah.
They're discussing it in their workshop meeting like they had yesterday, and they're having another one next Tuesday, which is their workshop.
Mm-hmm.
And then it will be on their May 13th board, board meeting agenda for approval.
I just feel that, that I haven't had enough time to look in more depth into some of the projects that are on here. And frankly, if I, if I did, it may turn out to be exactly what has been listed here previously, but I just feel I have, you know, we got the agenda on Friday, and we're just, we're looking at to agree or disagree with putting $8 million in, into parks, just like that. I'm, I would just like if there was a way that we could have a little more time.
Well, we're not going to adopt a resolution until May 7th.
Okay.
So, that's another three weeks.
What do you expect the resolution to state?
I thought, the way I thought, it was city council wanted to make a statement.
To say that we're in support of the extension.
Okay.
And to list what projects would be included if the city were to receive the funding.
I think that we were, at least initially, we're thinking about that this would also be helpful as an education program for the citizens of Punta Gorda, so that they would understand if they, when they do vote, that these are the kinds of things that would go into our list. Now, obviously, in terms of timing and things like that, we would make those decisions in the future once the, if the one cent sales tax is approved.
I mean, if you're suggesting you want to have an all-out discussion and go back through the projects, is that what you, I mean, I would not be in favor of that, but I don't know who else would support that, Kim?
I went to one of the meetings, and it was really, really great. I thought that everyone was really involved in it, and you were great, Howard, at moderating the whole thing and going through each of the projects. And I think that what the citizens picked is, is the things that they would like to see. I mean, I think people were really engaged in it. It's the meeting I went to, and I stayed there. And if I remember from the last time we had that list, you know, I'd just gotten on council, but I know that, as Steve had mentioned, there are some needs. So, we have our wish list, and as you're going through that, if things were to pop up that were a need that we would have to have, and we didn't have the money to buy those extra patrol cars or whatever, we might have to make a decision to use some of those funds for that purpose instead of, you know, raising taxes or something like that. So, I mean, I guess this is our best-laid plan if all things are well, and we don't have any.
Which serves as a good example, because the last, this last funding cycle, we did not have enough to do Gilchrist and complete the Harbor Walk, but we did shift the money over to do Lashley Park and do the improvements over there based on what funding was still available. So, I, I agree with Kim that this is like the plan, would be the plan moving forward if it was extended.
Well, I really have no problem with, with all of the stormwater, the street lighting, the sidewalks, technology fleet and public facilities, but the, we have $8 million or three-quarters of all of the spending is going to be associated with, with parks. And I just, I haven't seen enough detail on that. I would like to have an opportunity to see a little more detail on where that $8 million is intended to be given up.
Right. And although you're saying parks, it really is a lot of pedestrian improvements throughout the whole entire city, because we're talking about Virginia, Cooper, the park, the playground, which was very well-supported. And underneath the bridges, which the situation we have now is considered a choke point. It narrows, the Harbor Walk system narrows underneath the bridges, and that's been a complaint.
I agree.
And so then Marriage Point is another area that needs some renovation there, Howard.
Well, yeah, when you actually look at this list, the only park-related, Gilchrist Playground, if you consider that part of a park, that's in there, and finishing up the Harbor Walk, while it's, it's a major, mainly a pathway, there are also some park components to it, finishing it up all the way to the Linear Park. Most of this is all pathway.
And it covers, covers a lot of area in the city. It's not just concentrated downtown, because...
Yeah, Lashley Park Marina, that's actually a pathway.
That goes behind the Crab House Building.
Okay.
A lot of people have complained about that, too, that you have to come in front of the building, you can't just continue on to the other side to get to Lashley Park and the pavilions. You either have to walk through the grass between the building and, and the marina, or you have to go out front if you're on a bicycle. So, I think these, a lot of these segments are segments that the city's staff and residents feel are like missing links, so to say.
And as you're commenting on those items, I'm in agreement, but it's just that I haven't time, I haven't had time to go through the entire breakdown and be comfortable with all of the items that are part of that $7.99 component.
And Tom, you might want to, again, look at the next page here with all of the listing, because that's what I ended up doing, is to take a look at the specifics with the different project titles.
And really, it's my understanding, as, as we say when we start to do the work on Gilchrist, I mean, I mean, even today, we're going to look at part of Gilchrist, and we're going to really be looking at it, whether the needs, the plan that is already there, do we like it? Is it going to stay? Do we want to make any changes? Maybe the cost will go up, or maybe hopefully it'll go down.
Nancy?
Yeah, I would like to, you know, suggest that in some cases, while we might have considered something to be a park or a pathway, isn't that a nice thing to do? We've learned and demonstrated that these are economic development tools for our community. So, I look at these as not just a park to have someone enjoy it, but it's, it's really a tool for us as a community to continue to differentiate ourselves from the rest of other coastal communities, and it's been proven by visitors and new residents. This is what attracts people here. So, we're actually making an investment in the community and furthering that, the kind of thing that we started already. So, it's, it has a different perspective to me. So, I think that I get that from the committee, that they, they understand that, and they see that what it's done for our community.
I think in addition, though, when we look at our pathways, it's also a safety issue. So, I think we, it may need to be reframed as we present the information, again, to our citizens in terms of what these pathways are actually going to do and what they're going to be for, because if we look at our sidewalks, keep people on sidewalks, keep people on pathways, let's not put them into the streets, and, in terms of moving through the city. So, I also see this as, a lot of these areas as safety concerns.
And really, they are pedestrian improvements, they're not necessarily just sidewalks, you know, because take, for instance, burnt store aisles. These, these were identified under sidewalks as areas of need, that, you know, people want to get to 41, to get to the store, to get connected to the other sidewalk. So, we really did take that into consideration, too, is the connectivity. Instead of just building a piece over here and a piece over here, how can we connect it all together? And that's how some fell off the list, because they weren't pieces of connectivity, and some stayed on because of that reason. So, I, I see what you're saying, that you would like time to analyze it, but honestly, the committee did an excellent job in analyzing, and staff was there, and there were a lot of questions asked, and, and it was over a month's time that we dwindled it down to what we have here now. So, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't know what you want to do to do with it today, or...
As I'm hearing the responses from Nancy, and from Carolyn, and you, Mayor, I'm, I'm, as I said, I pretty much would come by it. I probably would sign on to the same thing had I seen more detail, but I think it's fine, I think we're okay with it. I'm okay.
Well, I think, as Kim mentioned, as things arise, we may see this as the way it is today, but we all know that things change.
Things change.
And, and as things, as conditions change, we may have to change with it.
We will, what I'm hearing is then prepare a resolution for the next council meeting, May 7th.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I also make just one other comment?
Sure.
Because I appreciate what our former mayor, Steve Fabian, said about needs and, and wants, and I think we have a number of needs on here. And again, I believe that the needs with regards to our pathways are needed in terms of not only economic development, but safety issues.
Is everybody okay? Okay. Next, we are going into recommended projects for Charlotte County Punta Gorda MPO project prioritization. That's a tongue twister.
This can get confusing, so Mitchell Austin from our urban design staff is here to help us with this.
Mitchell Austin, urban design. Every year, of course, the Metropolitan Planning Organization lists project priorities for the, for the new transportation improvement program, and every year they request from member agencies, the city, the county, and the airport authority, a list of priority projects. In the 2009, 2010 years, the city submitted a large number of projects for prioritization on that list. The vast majority of those projects have remained unfunded. Some of those projects have been funded, like the upcoming funding for Harbor Walk So, in looking at this list in light of the discussions with the ISS committee and the various priorities of city council and the citizens, take, staff has taken a look at that list and attempted to reprioritize that long list of unfunded priorities so that they're in line with the current community and elected official feedback regarding those projects. One thing I will note on here is that the, the number two listed priority, the US 41 Decorative Finished Street Lighting from IKEA Style Drive to Airport Road, currently in the new draft Transportation Improvement Program, that project has been funded, so that needs to be stricken from the list and everything moved up in space. So, the prioritization ranking does have an effect, but sometimes, just like that project was listed as the fourth priority on the list in previous years, it was funded ahead of some others because of its size. And the process of FDOT figuring out how to allocate resources, sometimes they have a pot of money that's X number of dollars, it won't fund a big project, but it'll fund a little project, so they'll find a priority that fits the cost, the dollars that they have available in those programs here.
So, these, these are unfunded?
These are all unfunded projects.
Except for number two?
Except for number two, which is the US 41 Decorative Street Lighting, IKEA Stahd Airport Road.
Okay.
Yes?
Are you asking, looking for questions?
Yes.
I think I know the answer to this question, but on item number six under highway projects, it says Cooper Street, complete street improvements, Airport Road to Marion Avenue. And first thought I had was, well, why are we stopping at Airport Road? I think it's probably because the rest of Airport Road down to IKEA Stahd is county.
Is, and the unincorporated county.
Right, it's county, not city.
Yes, ma'am.
This is one of those situations where people, the casual person driving around doesn't know that, and all of a sudden, but it stops someone, and they think, well, this is part of the city, and it's not. So, we know technically why it, something might stop. How do we get the county or the MPO to try to work to make this as transparent to the people living here as possible? So, because it, it would make sense to continue it on, but there's this short piece that's not there, and we may have to, we may struggle to get the county to try to agree with us.
Yes, that's, that's always an issue. I think one thing that, I mean, the only thing, practical thing that we can do on our end is, is, you know, put up the city limit sign and the "You are leaving the city of Punta Gorda." Beyond that, it's really a question of, of our elected officials speaking with their elected officials and letting them know what, and our citizens letting their elected officials at the county level know that this is a priority to us as a community, that we want consistency across these sort of oddly shaped boundary that we have on the eastern side.
Does the MPO have any influence in that?
Yeah, does the MPO ever have those discussions?
We do, and one of the reasons that I even asked for our review of our priorities is because as, what you see on the attachment, page one of the fiscal year 2014, '15 to '18, '19 project list, this was, this is the original list, it's already been submitted as a draft. We will be making a decision and voting on it at the next MPO meeting. So, one of the reasons that I felt it was important for our city council to weigh in is to say, these are our, these are our priorities now, they've been modified. Some of you have seen the red and green piece, which is very confusing.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, what I'd like to do is, if you agree with the prioritization list that we have, and again, we may not get funding for these, you have to understand that it's up to FDOT to say, yeah, we have some money, here's the pot. And the MPO, what we do, the MPO, is saying, yes, these are our priorities. And generally, you will see, it will go county, city, county, city, maybe airport stuck in there, but it's, again, we flip each time. So, there may be something that, again, when you take a look at the highway projects, Harborview Road is, is first up there. And that, again, would be a county road issue. The next one would be 41 at Carmelita, which would be ours. And as you see, the, the cost of these, again, it just depends on, I don't even see a cost for Harborview Road there, to be funded in the new fiscal year.
Yeah, it's not, there is no cost there.
There's no cost listed there.
No cost listed.
Actually, it's four point...
Harborview on our version, Carolyn, is, is one million. Number three, it shows it at 1.01.
And that was for the first phase, which was plant, PD and E, which is an environmental...
And that's a really narrow road, too.
Yeah.
Now, what, wasn't Carmelita Street intersection in some sort of stream?
Yes, it is.
It is.
It is, it is.
But it's not technically...
It's been funded for engineering, for design. This, it continues to be unfunded for construction.
Okay.
Why, it remains a top priority.
But the engineering money isn't available until...
I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
I thought it was like five years from now or something.
Yes, '18, '19.
Okay.
Do you wish that we should ask questions about the whole document, or...
Well, it would be, again, the...
Because I have some other, other questions.
I think the, the list that, again, Mitchell has put together in terms of, based on what we have, what has been funded, what is now pushed below, you know, further down our priority list, so, yes, this is a done.
I think it's a great list. As I looked through it, that, one of the questions, and I brought this up to Howard, and it's on page two of the Charlotte County Punta Gorda MPO FY 2014 slash 2015 dash FY 2018 slash 2019 project priorities. At the bottom of the page, there are some sidewalks, and item 2G, US 41 East and West Side, Tucker's Grade, Taylor Street, eight-foot sidewalk. And we have this wonderful MRT that goes down the east side of 41 and stops at Taylor's Road. While I'm not an avid cyclist, I'm a neighborhood cruiser, I have had a lot of interaction with the cyclist, cycling community over the last several years, and I know that they would love to see an extension of the MRT all the way down to Tucker's Grade, so that can get them into either Tropical Gulf Acres, or it can get them into Cecil Web. And I know that from being the ride director of Pedal and Play in Paradise for three years, cyclists coming in here, from avid cyclists coming in from other communities, don't like riding on 41. So, when I saw this, and I said, we're going to put a sidewalk, and I know you and I had a conversation, and you said, it's a whole lot less expensive to put a MRT in it than it is a sidewalk, and pedestrians and cyclists can coexist on a MRT much better than on a sidewalk, then what do we need to do to get this into a MRT instead of a sidewalk? And then they also have sidewalks going up the, in the list, going up the east side of 41, which goes, the east side of 41 kind of goes in between city and county and city, you know, back and forth, and if I had my druthers, I'd rather see a MRT rather than a sidewalk, and it would be less expensive. So, how do we influence that?
In terms of the relative cost of a sidewalk versus a multi-use recreational trail, it, they can be more or less expensive depending on the conditions. So, in a long stretch where you're not crossing many driveways, and there's relatively ride wide, wide right-of-way available for construction, multi-use recreational trails are very cost-effective when compared to traditional sidewalks, concrete sidewalks. So, that is, you know, caveated, correct. The, sort of the, the dynamics here are, this project has been requested by the county, it's been on the MPO priority list. It's basically county line to county line, US 41 sidewalks. And it's been on the list since the 90s. Very small portions of it have been funded over the years. And basically, FDOT said, get your act together, county, break this up into bite-sized segments so that we can maybe fund them at some point, you know, as, as the years go by, and maybe even get them rolled into roadway resurfacing projects to get economies of scale and those types of things. So, the county did that initial prioritization, which is what you see on this list here. In the MPO Technical Advisory Committee process, that city staff is able to participate in directly with county staff, we have made suggestions, some of those suggestions have been taken, and some of them have been rejected in that process at the staff-to-staff level. So, it's really at the level of the elected officials that, you know, this understanding of what the priority should be, you know, in terms of, let's not build a sidewalk to nowhere, let's build a multi-use recreational trail that will get people to a regional destination, Cecil Web. So, that's a conversation that can be had at that level, so that that understanding can be passed down to staff, and then county staff will understand where city staff is coming from when we make these suggestions, because it's just, that level of communication is not necessarily occurring, you know, all the way around the circle.
So, so Mitchell...
Two organizations and two sets of leadership.
So, and, but what you're asking us for today is approval of this list for the city?
This list, yes, ma'am, just for the city.
So, that's really what we need to decide if we're all okay with that. And I, I would think that if the Carmelita intersection was on the local option sales tax list, and it is in some kind of stream to be funded, are we all okay with keeping that at number one? Because that's going to majorly improve, take out the crazy intersection that we have now, and put a straightforward crossing signal and a, a light and a, what's a button you push, the pedestrian crosswalk?
Pedestrian signalization.
And it will extend the pathway.
Yeah, pedestrian signalization, crosswalk, make it much more safe for people that are trying to get over to that side.
Right.
Are we all okay with keeping that at number one? I think we should.
Yes, well, I just want to point out, too, that there are different pockets of funding. So, what you'll see also, it's under highway projects, but then it also comes under the trip projects on the back sheet, that that's also our number one priority. So, we keep pushing the same thing, and hopefully with one of the pots of money, it will come to the foreground and be funded.
And this, this intersection, if it's my recollection, that it came about with the inception of the Ring Around the City to really complete and make it as safe as possible. So, it's, it's been around for a while, and so it should be pushed to the top. And the city would have to match 50%,
Yes.
which is what we kept into the local option sales tax list, the 850,000 match. Okay? So, any other changes or recommendations to what Mitchell has created as far as our And I would think, if there are any changes in funding, you would let us know?
Correct.
And what I would like to do, then, is to sit down with Mitchell and to provide to the MPO before their next meeting, what changes are actually going to happen, rather than just crossing out and saying, you know, this is our priorities now, and this is where they fit in to the overall priorities of the...
How much time do you have to do that? Because the, the local option sales tax could affect some of these that are on here.
Well, we'll be, again, the next meeting is coming up in May, and so we will be, again, submitting this list to FDOT. So, if we get the funding from one cent sales tax, we can go back and really push on this again, with that FDOT.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's the only way we can keep moving forward.
Any other direction for Mitchell? Nope, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're in unfinished business, discussion of increased design costs for Harbor Walk 7, Gilchrist Park.
Again, if we have, Mitchell Austin is here again for this item, as well as Mark, Mike Jardullo from Wyler Engineering. This one, this one is an interesting issue. We have Harbor Walk Zone 7, Gilchrist Park, and that's the area from the Punta Gorda Waterfront Hotel to basically the gazebo. We were going to do this project with sales tax monies a while back. Then, when the downtown flooding Phase 2 came into being, we didn't want to go in there, use sales tax monies, finish that area of the pathways in the park, and then have to tear some of it up again with the downtown flooding. You see what we've done to that area. So, Linear Park 2 was originally planned for these grant funds, and council went ahead and transferred the money from Linear Park 2 to Harbor Walk Zone 7. And then, and the MPO agreed, and we got on the funding list. Well, now we're on the funding list for FY 2016, '17, and FY 2017, '18. We're assuming the money will be there. We have to do the design, and then we will use the grant monies for construction. The design is done. We have a biddable project, but unfortunately, it's not biddable in the eyes of the state. So, would the folks come up here and explain to the public why it's not biddable in a little, in a little more detail? more detail rather than me trying to explain it?
Again, for the record, Mitchell Austin, our design. Basically, the Florida Department of Transportation has, has informed us that the design plans that we submitted back in the, at the end of 2013, that are 100% in our eyes, do not meet the requirements of the Plan's Preparation Manual. They have determined that this project, because of the structures involved in it, which include the pavilions, the open-air pavilions, the restroom pavilion and the seawall, that this is a critical project and that as a critical project, it has to meet the full requirements of the Plan's Preparation Manual. In order to do that, we have been informed by the engineer of record that there will be significant additional design costs to be incurred. So that's basically where we stand as staff. Now, FDOT is not required, making these requirements, it's not some individual sole bureaucrat sitting in a cubicle somewhere saying, they have to meet these standards because FDOT is requiring those standards, the Florida Department of Transportation is requiring those standards because the Federal Highway Administration tells them that they have to meet those standards when they're expending federal funds. And these are federal dollars.
Thank you.
Anything to add?
For the record, Mike Jardullo from Wyler Engineering. Just to give you a little idea of what, of what, you know, we're talking about from an engineering standpoint, when we started on this project back in about 2009 time, it wasn't the, the goal of the city to seek grant funding from the FDOT for this project. So as a way to have a lesser design fee than what we would have normally for a DOT project, we designed using big sheets, paper that were at scales, that were, you know, very, very large scales, completely constructible as is, much like the other projects that have been done in the city that haven't been constructed using DOT funding. Our fee at that time was roughly 4% of the construction cost. The DOT commonly uses 10% of the construction cost for their engineering design. So now we're going back and we're having to take the plan set and take it from a 4% cost of design to a 10% cost of design. I computed the numbers for the city staff and the difference was between about $90,000 to $100,000. That is how much more it would have cost us in, in the beginning, had we known this was going to be a DOT design. So our contract would have been 90 to $100,000 more for Zone seven in order to get that done. Unfortunately, the way we are today, we've done a lot of work that really just goes in the garbage can. A few different, a few different documents that we've produced now need to be the DOT documents. So some of that work is actually obsolete at this point. The city's also asked us to make several changes with the structures now. After looking at it again, a few years later, they decided that they like, rather than relocating the existing structures, the pavilions, the bathroom roofs, those sort of things, they want to have new structures that look like Lashley Park. So in, in reality, the fee would be normally more than this 100, 90 to $100,000 range. However, I understand the position that the city is in, in this point of time, kind of got thrown a curveball. So I've, I've talked with Jeff Wyler, the president at Wyler Engineering. We've agreed to get the plans to the level that the DOT would like for no more than $90,000.
So Mike, I'll just start off because I have real heartburn over this because we have 100% plans, like you said, and now they're telling us that we have to bring them to this other standard. I don't have a big problem with that, but the, the problem that I foresee down the future, especially with the seawall loading capacity calculations, design details, that what is, what is going to happen when we submit, say we, we, we do that, we hire you to raise us to PPM and you submit the design and they say, wait, 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 no, you can't build the seawall that way, you need to build it to this other specification. And then that obviously is going to increase our construction costs, not only for Zone seven, but all the way down the park. And I, I just don't know that what it could do to the actual park project, seems like it's going to totally rework it from my perspective.
Right. I understand that. And luckily, the position that we're in today is that we've already submitted the plans as we have them 100% to the DOT. We've already received comments back. So we're very aware of the changes that will result as, as bringing it up to the DOT standards. And you're right, one of those items is the seawall will have to be a little bit deeper than we designed. Are we talking about an additional cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars? No. For the seawall itself, probably in total, you know, you're looking at maybe a few hundred thousand dollars more in construction cost as a result of meeting DOT requirements.
Just for Zone seven, though?
That's correct. Now, all of the requirements that we have for Zone seven don't, wouldn't necessarily apply to the remaining zones. Those, those zones, unless you decided that you wanted to seek more DOT funding for those zones, they would not be required to meet the Plan's Preparation Manual and the other DOT requirements if you funded them yourselves.
But that wouldn't affect the seawall if it's all tied together? Certain parts of it could be the depth that you, you've originally designed and other parts could be?
Yeah, we could work with city staff to do that. You know, the surface of the seawall is not, you're not going to see a difference. It really is going to be, you know, the design criteria, are we designing for, you know, 100-year storm sort of event sort of thing? So we're looking at the, the depth of the seawall panels into the ground that would be increased slightly as a result of the DOT design.
For that portion?
Nothing that, that's correct. Yeah, nothing that you would see, you would visually see and say, oh, well, this portion obviously was constructed with DOT dollars and this portion the city paid for themselves. This is why it looks different. You, you wouldn't see that difference.
Kim?
Okay. So when you say a few hundred thousand dollars, that's more than two. So how many, how many, and I mean, you know, originally I think, well, $90,000 if we're going to get a million ninety, that would be good. But if we're going to spend a few hundred thousand to get this up for the more construction and then we spend that hundred thousand dollars, I mean, I, I just really want to know the numbers.
Sure. Right. I think there's, there's three components that you have to look at. One is the additional design, which is the 90,000. The other is construction, and I should have said a couple because my, my idea is, is in the neighborhood of about $200,000 for Zone seven. And then you also have, and, but just to backtrack, on construction, we're, we're not only looking at requirements like the seawall getting a little bigger, we're looking at the contractors having to do a whole lot of reporting that they wouldn't have to normally do. So that, that would be in that number as well. It's not necessarily the actual change and the improvements. And then you also have an increase in staff time because the staff will have to manage a DOT quality project. They'll have to see certified payrolls on a weekly basis. They'll have to, you know, report the pay, pay applications. There's just extra steps involved. Your, your staff has done this many times in the past, but, but there would be additional costs on that end as well.
Plus the gazebos, the roofs, the.
Villains.
The bathrooms, didn't you say we had to change?
Not change, but they need a more detailed set of plans, correct?
Well, what, what the plan was, you have that big rectangular shaped pavilion out there and then you have two, they're six-sided pavilions and they're stuck together. On the original plan, those three structures, we're going to have the roofs lifted off and placed on a new set of piles. So you would have had to pay for the piles. Now, under these plans, the DOT won't accept, you know, reuse of those structures, so they'll require new structures for those three. The bathroom building that is in Zone seven won't change as a result.
Maybe we need to have a number, like a ballpark.
Well, when you're talking about staff time, we have staff on board already.
Sure.
So some of that is probably in kind. The actual construction, we have, we're going to get grant funds around 1.8 million. Will 1.8 million do what we need to do? And we haven't bid it yet. I know we haven't bid it yet. From where the Pontagorda Waterfront Hotel that Harbor Walk ends, you know, that area there, to the gazebo, will, will we be able to do, based on the bidding, 1.8 million dollars worth of work?
I believe so, yes. My estimate currently stands between about 1.5 and 1.7 million dollars. Now, that may change slightly when we, you know, go through this process, but I'm confident that the, the estimate will come out under 1.8 million dollars for Zone seven.
We should be okay with those grant.
Well, I'm still concerned about.
Pascal, Pascal, is it?
Just the gazebo.
Okay.
To the gazebo, right?
Okay.
I mean, it goes a little bit beyond the gazebo, but, but yeah, that's a good, a good benchmark.
This is Gil, right here.
I'm still concerned about the comments that we may get back from DOT. I mean, you say that now, right now, you know, you're saying you're between 1.5 and 1.7. But once we get the PPM completed, if we decide to do that, then when we resubmit 100%, then, I mean, there's a good possibility that, like you said, we can't reuse the piles, we have to do the seawall to their calculations. And then what else? You know, what else are they going to come up with that they could say, well, no, we don't accept that, you have to improve?
Right. And, and like I said, luckily, we do have, we have received one round of comments from the DOT for their initial review. So we do have, you know, an idea. You know, one of the things that we found out, because we sent the, the whole set of plans, is they had a lot of heartburn on the little foot bridges, which are located on the complete opposite side of the project. So by shaping out Zone seven, we've, we've, you know, actually pulled out some of those things that yielded a lot of those comments. We do have a, a pretty good idea because they've done the seawall review, they've done the, you know, review on the structures. We've corresponded with them several times after they've done their review. So, you know, it's, it's definitely possible we could be thrown another curveball because DOT reviewers could switch and they could see something else that they didn't inform us of before. But, you know, the only, the only saving grace for us is that we have seen, you know, one full, complete review. They called it 60% review, but for us, it was our 100% plan phase. So they've seen everything.
And so what is your experience by doing PPM work? Are you familiar with it? Are you doing a lot of it, a little bit of it?
Yeah, we, we are familiar with it. It, you know, it, it kind of depends on the, on the project. Most of the projects that you do through the LAB program, which is the grant funding source that this is coming from, aren't required to meet PPM. The reason that this has to meet PPM is because it's a critical project. And the big, the big change really isn't anything that anybody sees. I mean, for example, you know, we have a computer-aided drafting program where somebody draws a line. And right now, we draw a line and we're done with it. But DOT has a 16-character name for that individual line that it has to be named. And every single line has to be at their exact line weight and line width and, you know, named, all this kind of stuff. The contractor who bids the job will never see that. Most likely, nobody will ever see that. But in order to actually fulfill the requirement of meeting the PPM, we'll have to do that. So that's a lot of the time that it takes. Another requirement is they, they want all the plans to be printed on 11 by 17 pages, so, you know, about this big. Our plans, like a lot of the plans you see at the city, are on 24 by 36 pages. They want a, also a bigger scale. So if we have a site plan right now, that site plan is going to turn into roughly six sheets. So we're going to see our, you know, any of the paving, drainage, and drainage plans, the site plan, the landscape plan, the irrigation plan, all those that we have a single sheet for are going to go up by, you know, six times. You know, detail sheets, for example, you know, in order to print the details on a legible sheet, we're going to have to divide all of our details up. So it's a lot of, you know, really what it is, is a lot of drafting work. It's not, you know, it's, it's not like we, it's not like the concrete under the sidewalk's going to get thicker because, you know, we're meeting DOT and before we weren't, you know, that, that sort of thing. It's, it's a lot of, you know, kind of semantic drafting exercises that need to be done.
Tom?
You mentioned before, Mike, you had about 50 drawings that are, currently have been prepared for Harbor Walk seven. To conform to this criteria, you're probably looking at, at 200 to 300 drawings, I would think.
Yeah, I mean.
By the time you break it up into PPM criteria, is there layering, a different layering tech, technology required as well when you, when you, it's a, it's a huge amount of draft work.
Absolutely, yeah.
I've evaluated Mike's number of $90,000, having done it for a, a long time. I, I don't, I, I think it's a very, very fair number for the amount, the kind of work that Wyler has to do for this. So I think, I don't have any problem with the number, Mike. I think you guys have done a fair job for the city in that respect.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. And you were right, it's a completely new layering. Every line that got drawn on that plan, so it will have to be redrawn. And so it's, it's a lot of time for, you know, a draftsman, a skilled draftsman who's familiar with the PPM requirements to sit there and redraw stuff that was already done.
Carolyn?
Well, I just want to comment that in discussions with Howard yesterday, I did follow up and call Secretary Haddaway with regards to this, this project. He was initially concerned that it took so long to get staff feedback on our submission of our materials, which may or may not be an issue. But he said he would look at it and he did ask for all the information from our staff with regards to what we had proposed, what the staff comments were, and to take a look at it because in his very brief way, he was in the car in Seattle, so, you know, heading back here this morning. But he indicated that it seemed like it was a bit much to have a critical, this to be a critical project when it's an alternative transportation route with pathways, et cetera. I'm not sure where that's going to fall out. He's going to take a look at the staff comments. It may not be anything different. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that he might say, well, you know, staff went a little bit overboard and this is not necessary. But again, maybe because of the federal funding, we'll have to, again, follow the, the criteria.
Did you hear?
I just wanted to say, I didn't think your, I, I want to make it clear, I think your cost is very fair. I just thought if we were going to be paying a lot more money for the overall project, the construction and that type of thing, that it was bogus point.
Can I go? Is there any, could we write some kind of letter and ask, okay, we've gotten the comments and we understand the, the design changes that they want, but can we implement those with our current design and not have to go to the measure of PPM? Could that be an option? Number five?
Again, Mitchell Austin.
Begging for mercy?
I believe that the, that the conversation that Councilperson Freeland started with the FDOT District Secretary Billy Haddaway is, is the only avenue to look at that. And staff has responded to him and provided him with the information he was looking for. We're just waiting on a response back from him. From a purely technical standpoint, I, I don't think we're going to see any action. I think his primary concern was with the responsiveness of his staff in regards to helping the city understand the technical issues and getting it done in a timely fashion, which our side.
Well, was it the staff that, that classified it a critical project? I mean, it was his staff.
It was, it was his staff, yes, ma'am.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. Maybe we could write a letter to say, you know, this has been classified a critical project, we're more than happy to incorporate the design changes that you've suggested. And could we be relieved of the additional PPM standards if we comply with what's been recommended? I mean, it's worth a shot, I, I think.
I agree. I would try anything.
Because we've already paid for the design, so we're, and like Mike said, some of that is junk now. Some of that is no longer, not junk, but in their eyes, it's not sufficient. In their eyes, it's not sufficient.
There you go.
It's not on the proper forms.
Right. I understand that, but they're holding us to a whole nother standard that we never intended to have to comply with.
You're exactly right.
So can we put that in a letter and send it and see?
Well, let's see what the kind of response we get from the secretary and then from there, we'll follow up. I mean, I think that would be.
Before we?
Yeah, and, and I was part with conversations with staff in the DOT. And I think that the DOT staff, I think we've kind of exhausted all of our asking for them to not make it a critical project. I think at this point, it, it would be appropriate to pursue going above, you know, the, the regular staff level. Because we had at least two conference calls with them and they, you know, and that was a question that we kept asking, you know, how do we get this? You know, we took the bridges out, we did some of these things to try to get in, they said, no, it's still, still a critical project.
Well, actually, I'm going to follow up on that last statement and then going to Councilmember Devine's question about what perhaps additional construction costs might be involved. What, what are the structures or other specific features that cause us to be classified as critical? And can those be taken out and funded separately?
The, well, one of the structures are the seawall replacement, and then you have three pavilions and one restroom building. So those are all the, the structures which I, you know, I believe they're looking at and requiring it to be a critical project.
And so if we took those structures out of the, a grant request, so that it was no longer considered to be a, a critical project, the rest of the project could be funded without having to meet the higher standards, what would be the cost to the city of having to do those structures out of its own pocket as opposed to getting grant funds?
If, if I may, just from the standpoint of federal compliance, we have project limits. Anything that occurs within those project limits has to meet federal standards. The, the current design of the Harbor Walk facility itself, the multi-use recreational trail that is the impetus for seeking the grant funding, is wider than the current space between the existing pavilions and the existing seawall. So those pavilions, including the restrooms, have to be removed. Once we remove those restroom facilities with federal funds from apart, we have to reinstall them. So they would have to occur simultaneously. And once we're in those construction limits, any dollar, any public dollar that's spent And once we're in those construction limits, any dollar, any public dollar that's spent has to meet federal requirements. So even if we pulled it out of the project, because we would be doing it simultaneously, they would, that all of our plans would have to be reviewed by FDOT and they would have to follow those rules. There, there's no escape clause. We're doing it all at the same time.
He's an attorney.
Well, yeah, he's.
He's used to looking.
Thank you.
I, I would still like to pursue the letter and see if we can get some response that way. And it would be a total follow-up to what you've already started. And just, you know, can we quote in there that we've already spent, how much we've spent on design? And this is going to cost the city an additional 90 to 100, or 90,000, $90,000 that?
That, that is part of the documentation that we've already sent to Secretary Haddaway. So I, I think that, we don't have it under a formal letter from, from the elected officials, but we've already forwarded that information to the staff.
We can put that in a, in a formal letter. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we're going to, we've done that. We started that process and we're going to try that process. If that fails, how does this council, what is the council action regarding this design fee? So that we can, if it fails, we can get forward with the design fee. We need some action.
I just, I can't really commit to it right now. I just have too much heartburn over it to.
Could I suggest to Carolyn, maybe the letter come from you? If he was in his car, just send the letter, just recapping your conversation, adding a few.
Well, again, we, we need to hear his response after he takes a look at the material that staff sent. And then perhaps with the follow-up, do a little bit more begging.
Right.
Or something. So I, I guess I'm not, you know, I think we should move forward with the project. We're going to get the funding, the 1.7 million, the 1.8 million, and I think we should just move forward.
Is that number set in stone, the 1.8 million? Is it based on the DOT, the MPO budget or what, is that based on what we've asked for?
It's based on what we've asked for and that's what they've budgeted for the project. And that's basic. So at this point, those funding, those dollars are in out years. Anything can happen between now and then.
And we could amend our requests too and say, well, since we've had to go back and redo, now the construction is 2 million.
Anytime you start asking for more money, typically your project falls out of the funding year and it gets pushed into an out year where they have more money available. So it, it could push the project further into the future.
So even with those additional costs, the project would still come in at the 1.8, you feel?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I suggest that, as Councilmember Freeland said, we move ahead with it. I mean, you know, we, we're getting to millions, seven, a million eight. We, we, we have to cover the $90,000 cost to revise the drawings. As Mike said, the drawings have already been reviewed by DOT. Yes, there may be some changes going forward that increase the cost. I don't believe they're going to be exorbitant. You know, what, we really don't have a lot of options. It's their rules, we need to play by their rules if we, we want to get the money and move ahead.
My recommendation was not to have Wyler Engineering start tomorrow. No. We need to hear how our request is first.
Yes.
Okay, we weren't going to have them start tomorrow.
Right, right. No, I would agree with option number four first, that Carolyn is pursued. And then if, depending on what the outcome is, if we have to spend the 90. It's, unfortunately, it's what we have to do. I, I don't disagree with you, Rachel. The, my first reaction was, exactly, is there just some bureaucrat sitting there someplace causing us this? But it sounds like there's more to it, a lot more to it than when you start to dig into it. But still, it's worth, it's worth an effort.
Yes.
And I guess as I understood what Mike said too, is that 90,000 would be as part of that 1.8 million. So we will be.
No, no design, we have to pay for the design.
Got it, okay.
We have to break that.
And I do feel a little bit more comfortable if he's saying we don't have to continue the changes all the way through the park, just in that area. That does make me feel a little bit better, but do you have enough direction?
Is council okay? I want to make sure we understand this. We are not starting Wyler Engineering tomorrow. We will not start them until we hear back definitively from the FDOT secretary whether we have any options or not. If we have no options, can procurement amend our contract and I can go ahead and sign it? At that, only at that point, that we have, we have exhausted our option.
Yes.
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 I would like to talk about it again before that, but if you have enough yeses, then you're good.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the groundwater reverse osmosis water treatment plant cooperative funding grant application and final staff ranking.
Okay. Tomorrow at 12:20, the bus leaves from the City Hall Annex. We have three city vehicles ready, depending on who all is going to need to come up in the city vehicles. We're going to drive to Sarasota. We do have some potential folks from the Utility Advisory Board coming with us. So we've offered them transportation as well. We have so far a minimum of seven, maybe more speakers. You have in front of you what your topics are. Now, you don't have to say these word for word. You, you have to be comfortable with how you're saying it. But what we plan to do is package this and provide this to the governing board members that are at the meeting Thursday with, on our letterhead. And here is basically what we're going to be saying. Maybe not word for word, but here, here it is. So if you do have any substantial changes to what you are going to say, email them to us so we can get it in the package before we leave. To start with, we're going to have Mayor Kiesling talk about the project overview, why we think it's multi-jurisdictional. Missy Barletto, who is the chair of the Utility Advisory Board, is going to talk about board policy and how the, the fact that we don't have any more local basin boards anymore, so we've basically taken away that funding source. Councilmember Devine is going to talk about cost effectiveness of our project. And actually, it was the Swift Mud staff that rated our project cost effective. Vice Mayor Freeland's going to talk about the four Rs. Regulatory, reliable, regional, and redundancy. Now, we're going to spell that out, nobody's going to know what the four Rs is. Councilmember Prafki is going to talk about how it's a citizen-driven project. And that's true, it, it is a citizen. That's why it came back, it came back from our citizens. Councilmember Kavanaugh is going to talk about local funding sources. We're not going to call it taxation without representation.
Why not? I like that.
Come on.
Right?
No, we're going to call it local funding sources.
What are we going to call it?
Local funding. Local funding.
I like the taxation.
And the fact that we've, we've paid a lot of money and that the fact that we don't have any local basin boards again, we're pretty well out of the picture unless staff's interpretation changes that we are multi-jurisdictional. And then the city manager will conclude. Instead of special exception, we're going to call it a modification of board policy. And the fact that local governments do variances and exceptions all the time, they have it in place. When you issue a special exception or a variance, it does not set a precedent. If they modify their board policy, it's not going to set a precedent. And they already have it in their policy that they can modify it. So that's the point we're going to try and talk about. And then we might have some members of the Utility Advisory Board speaking after that as well.
Did we ever find out back when you, Carolyn, went to the full board meeting, there was discussion about other cities? That were examples of what we are trying to do? Has that been mentioned anywhere?
Under.
Just like city of so-and-so, just like city of?
Under, under Missy Barletto's, she's going to be amending her speech to include the city of Tarpon Springs.
Which is an example of the same type of situation?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Was Clearwater not also?
If you could email that revised speech to us. Oh, okay. Yeah, city of Tarpon Springs.
Okay.
Even though it doesn't set a precedent, we are going to remind them that it was done.
Good. I'm probably going to cut out some of the legal mumbo jumbo that I've provided. State statute.
One of the things, Rachel, that I was thinking is that, leave it in there for them to.